Are you alive?
I am alive.
Somebody wants to kill you.
Oh.
What?
I tell ya, I tell ya.
Watch your bleach. You may be ill. Got spots in my eye. I can see think it's from the bleach.
I know, but I got plenty. Oh splash. Dude!
I'm just trying to save your life.
Oh, well, thank you. Oh, no, you're gonna put him next to me. Are you kidding me? So. It must be the painter.
Camera guy. Prep the camera.
It must be Clint because the cementer isn't here today.
No, it was this morning. I was about to say. I'd just add.
I know, no, no, no. I clean the plugs at night and I use a lot of chemicals. Well, you got to. You want to clean the place to go.
But he's flashing all these monochromes. Did the lockers, there's spots in the lockers. It's a bleach.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, well.
That's all we can think of.
I know, I know.
I'm just telling you. I'm just saving your life.
Thank you. Oh, I know that. No, I just use straight up bleach. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda. Motion to approve the second. All in favor? Motion to approve the council on the regular meeting on March 3rd, 2014. Second. First and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Claims. Bills in between $120,175.22. Motion to approve?
Go move.
First and second. All in favor? Okay. Current claims. Most to approve?
Go move.
Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Communications from the public. Is Therese DeBor here?
Yes. Therese DeBor.
DeBor, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Back in July, I had approached to you folks about using the Armory Building for gymnastics and youth fitness. I understand now that it doesn't have complications like you thought it might. So I'm reapproaching you and asking that that may be considered or proposed to add to the park plan. And there's a group of us here that support that. I don't know if you want them to stand so you know how many or anything of that sort.
We would be looking at the possibility of adding that to the park plan except that we're not going to do anything with the Armory until later on in the summer.
I understand that. It would take a long time to develop a plan for that. I just wanted to be allocated for that so plans can start to be made.
Well, maybe during the budget process, we can. We're hoping to be able to get some more money to add on to this parks plan. I mean, that's our biggest hurdle right now is money. We got it. We don't have so much we had. But I mean, it's something we can quite possibly look at during the budget session.
Right. And if you could consider that and we could start making a plan for that, then we could also do fundraising and do efforts for that.
Quite seriously what he's saying, I mean, we still have five, six months before we can do anything with that building.
Yeah, it's gonna take a good year probably to put it all together as well. You know, so you'd probably have to sit empty again for a year. Is that what you're saying?
Just another five or six months for sure.
You do know there's no heat in there at all?
Yes, that's why I'm saying it's gonna take a long time to plan it all out and develop it and just the concepts and the ideas and everything that's needed and raise money for that.
Is there water and service to that?
There's water to it. The bathroom in the office. At least it used to be.
But nowhere else.
National Guard Armory. No, nobody's helped them build it.
We have in consideration.
Right. I know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, but that's why I'm saying if we could have the idea now and start planning for that, but if I get no yes from you folks, then there's nothing we can do until July, well then it just sits empty for a whole nother year, you know, or...
The problem is we only have so much to start this parks plan.
Yep.
And everybody's got a different idea.
Right.
I mean, we've got several places we wanted to do, but it's just not feasible at this point to try to get them all going.
Right.
Unless we come up with some more money.
But she's talking about a budget. She's saying we have people to do fundraising, so it's not necessarily out of our budget.
Well, I'm telling you, there's no one here that's gonna oppose you. If you guys can come up with money and we can talk to Matt and add that on, I mean, there's none of us that will offer any opposition.
But if we don't have a location, if we don't have something that large to, you know, if you don't say yes to that, then nobody's gonna donate their money to that. Does that make sense?
So what you're asking is if you can have that building for gymnastics, what if you commit it to that?
Right. Yep.
No matter when it is.
Right.
I think what she's saying is let's make it part of the parks plan to see if that fits into the recreation and the parks use of that building up there. As Matt's doing whatever he's going to do if you approve that later in the meeting, then it's at Butler Park and if you approve the Butler Park portion of that, it would all be included in his planning. Because I, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, I think I seen you came in, but you were aware that that could end up being something that you might have to look at.
I think that that would fit into that planning process for what we do for it. You know, we wouldn't do architectural plans to help you renovate the building necessarily, but as far as identifying the uses and the kind of things that you might need to do on the site and kind of a general scope for that, yeah, let's put that in there along with everything else you can think of. So, yeah. I don't know. I don't know what you need from tonight, but definitely in the needs assessment of Butler Park Plan, we absolutely look at that and make sure it gets sorted out to whatever the community thinks is best.
So we can give good consideration to adding it to the parks plan.
Okay. And so, is it possible? I don't know how to phrase it exactly, but...
You asking for a yes or a no right this morning?
I'm saying should I make a motion and asking you guys to allocate that for youth fitness, gymnastics, youth fitness?
I think what we're probably gonna end up doing is considering everything that we have to. I don't think anybody's gonna argue with it. It's a need, but at this point, time is kind of unfair for us to actually ask and try to get here to ask us something when we don't know all the numbers as of yet. It's hard to make a good plan and a good choice when we don't know what we're looking as far as numbers and so forth.
If it becomes part of the park plan, there will be public opportunity for people to come in and discuss what options that building would be used for. I think that's what I heard Matt say is that that can be part of the overall needs assessment that you're looking at tonight, that he was willing to talk about that during the open meetings and get ideas.
Okay.
Like put words in your mouth or something.
That's my suggestion is that you don't need to designate it. If it's the community will, then you want to make sure that's what you guys end up doing in the process, you know, you would have everybody weigh in and do it. It doesn't matter to you, I suggest.
When do you want the building? When would you need it? Well, because there's so much planning involved and fundraising and on and on, if we could get a yes that we could start something, not until after, you know, June, July, then that's when. Because it's a long process. It's a long plan process.
Well, but you see, in his needs assessment, you might have 3,000 people say they don't want it. They might have a different idea. So I guess kind of where Dave was kind of going with that, we kind of need to wait till he does his public, let the people speak, I guess, for lack of a better term. I mean, I have no problem what you're doing, it's just I can't speak for every citizen saying, yeah, we're just gonna give it to you guys 100%. I mean, that's what we're hoping when he does his assessment needs, you know, people have a chance to weigh in.
Great. And then how long does that take, the assessment or survey that you're talking about?
Well, I guess the schedule is a second call right now. Couple of months process.
I mean, we'll try to work with you as close as we can. It's just, it's hard for us to give you a concrete yes tonight because...
Ray Acuffey?
You know, I think it's a good deal that we have this, but I think we're getting the carton of the horse. And as I'm running for Ward 1 Councilman, I don't know if I agree with that or I'm up to speed on anything of this sort as of yet, but I couldn't give you my support without knowing everything that's involved with doing it this way. I think it's a little early right now to do that, to make a commitment, because we might have some new council people coming on board here very shortly.
Thank you, Ray.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other communications?
No.
Molly?
Yes, I want to do the bid for the business. First year, we donated to the city like $15,000 for the sign. But last year, we decided to put some money also to the city. And one other thing we tried to work on is to put the lights under the poles. So before I'm gonna do any further, I want to know if it'd be okay to use that electricity with the city pay for it, because that'd be used for four, five hours when that pole goes running. Because that's some power running under the bridge, right before the poles, and I probably gotta go talk to some engineer or who about that, so we find out what kind of power is over there. Before we're gonna go and install any kind of lights, I want to know how to run that electricity. So it'd be okay with you guys to let you know, so if we need it, so maybe you better come at the end of here and ask for the pool or something like that.
We'll take it under advisement and we'll try to get it on the agenda.
Right. And then I want to say that also we were thinking like if case we take a light like a Zippo, it'd be also nice to put some lights on there.
Might have to talk to the city engineer about that and see if there's anything over there that's available to run power for that in particular.
All right. So if you have that, you know, the danger is gonna be come out, so we don't hire you.
Thank you. Any more communications from the publics? We have a meeting at 7:15 and I think I'd like to go into that for just less than a minute or eighteen minutes. I'd like to call Bill from Black Hills Council of Governments to give us a presentation. I think he's going to have another hearing too with regard to development and housing needs assessments. Do you want to use the microphone? Can you share that's working?
Move. Tell me it's working. I'm Bill, I asked of Black Hills Council of Local Governments for Rapid City. I'm here tonight to help you conduct this public hearing. This is for the purposes of a community development block grant application or the CEG application. And I do have a sign and sheet I'm gonna pass around. We apply for these grants, the state always likes to see everybody that's in attendance, so I'm just gonna pass this around. If everybody here could sign it, I'd appreciate it.
Well, there's kind of three parts to this hearing, but we're gonna go through them pretty quickly. The first part, we're just gonna give a recall review of the proposed grant application and then the folks from the ambulance service are gonna talk a little bit more about the details of the project. And after that part takes place, then the council does need to formally ask for a public comment. That needs to be reflected in the minutes. Then after that, we're gonna review something called the Community Development and Housing Needs Assessment. It's just kind of a little miniature goal setting document for the community and I'll present that and then the council needs to discuss that and then formally ask for a public comment and then adopt that document. And then the final part of the hearing is there's a whole list, you probably saw them on your agenda, a whole list of resolutions and certifications and those are all things that, they're just federal requirements, they're things that you have to do if you want to apply for the grant funds. So I'll review those very briefly in just a second. Well, basically, the proposed grant application is, as I mentioned, a CEG, Community Development Block Grant Application. In South Dakota, only cities and counties can apply for CEG funds. Those are actually HUD dollars that are built out to the states. And South Dakota has a competitive grant program. Now, what can happen though, even though only cities or counties are the only eligible applicants, they can apply for eligible sub recipients. So in this case, the ambulance service actually is a sub recipient or the sub applicant. So if the city chooses to go ahead with this, you're basically applying on behalf of the ambulance service. We've been working on this proposed project for quite a while, actually for the better part of a year and a half. I've been working with the service in getting an income survey completed because that was the first step to find out if they qualified or not, because majority of the beneficiaries from the project have to meet low to moderate income threshold requirements. And Jack and the rest of the folks from the ambulance service for a ton of time into that and did a good job. The survey came back, we just completed that a couple of months ago and it showed 54%, thereabouts, low to moderate income persons and the threshold requirement is 51%. So they clearly met that requirement and that enabled us to move ahead with the grant application. So real briefly, the application proposes the maximum CEG allowable in South Dakota. That's $515,000 request. The total project cost is just short of 3.1 million. So the balance, assuming that that entire grant award is made and that's a question mark obviously, but let's just say it were, the balance of the project funding is proposed to come from a rural development loan and then $730,000 of cash from the ambulance service that they saved in their building fund over the years. The proposed building is about 13,000 square feet of floor area and includes three main areas. And again, I'm gonna let the ambulance folks go into this more, but basically there'd be an administration and training area, staff housing area, and a vehicle bay area. And then I've provided you with copies of the draft application. Obviously, there's a lot of information in there. I'm not gonna go over all of that, but if you choose to proceed with this, we'll complete the application, we'll get it to the state by April 1st deadline. Harley, do you want me to go through those certifications now or let the ambulance folks?
You might, as long as you're talking, just kind of finish up with the certifications and then let them talk about it.
Okay, I'm gonna run through these real quick. Hopefully I have these in the same order as you. The first one is Community Development Block Grant Application Resolution. That's just the resolution that authorizes you to submit the application whilst the mayor has signed the application. Second one is a Project Certificate Officer Resolution. This authorizes the mayor to sign certain grant related documents and also the ambulance service to sign certain grant related documents. Third one is an Environmental Certificate Officer Resolution. Because of the federal funding, a grant is awarded, we'll have to do an environmental review and this just authorizes the mayor to sign all those documents. Fourth thing is kind of a lengthy title, is the one regarding the payment requests for the ambulance service. What this does, as they're the sub recipient, if you approve this, this would allow any grant dollars to go directly to the ambulance service instead of coming to the city first. And that's typically what happens with these types of projects. Next one's called an Operation Maintenance Repair Statement. That just basically is a certification that the city is delegating the responsibility for the ongoing operation and maintenance repair costs to the ambulance service and then the ambulance service, as well as the city, would be signing this document. Next one's a Relocation Displacement and Acquisition Plan. That's a whole lot of writing in there, but basically what it says is that since you're not displacing any persons from their homes, there's really nothing that you have to do. You don't need to meet these requirements. Next one's a Restriction on Lobbying. It's just a standard thing. Anytime you apply for federal dollars, you have to certify that you're not gonna use any federal dollars for lobbying purposes. Next one's called a Code of Conduct Resolution. And again, because of the federal funding, we have to certify that there's not gonna be any conflict with the interest regarding user funds. Next one's an Equal Employment Opportunity Policy. Something you obviously do already, but again, just go on record, is ensuring that you're gonna follow equal opportunity guidelines. And there's an Excessive Force Policy. This one basically says that the city is not gonna use excessive force in the case of nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. You know, again, these are all things that are just requirements of the federal grant And I think we're getting there. The next one is Resolution Assuring Fair Housing. Just indicates some general steps that the city's gonna always take to ensure that there's Then there's something called a Documentation Environmental Exemption. This would be authorizing the mayor to sign this form. What this does is if there's a grant award and once the state would approve that, then they would approve this exemption. What that would do is that would allow the ambulance service to get started with their design of the facility before we have the full environmental review done. So it just speeds things up. So we would need approval and signature on that. And we've got a couple pages from the actual grant application that the mayor would need that authorization to sign versus the application for state assistance. That's just the title page. And then the second page from the application is something called Applicant Recipient Disclosure Report. It just identifies the different sources of funding for the project and where those dollars are gonna end up and who's gonna be the recipient of those dollars. I think I covered everything. If there's any questions at all, I'll have to answer them.
Do you touch on 16 annexation for the ambulance service?
The annexation resolution.
Yeah, the annexation is, was something that came up because the city is making application for the grant, it's necessary that the annexation proceed forward. Again, I'm gonna turn it over to the ambulance service and please remember we need to get input after that and then after that, we do that community development housing assessment
Might go up front, might be easier. People that don't know me, I'm Randy Stonebaum, president of the Hot Springs Ambulance Service. And I guess a little history, as our service has continued to grow for the last about 10 years, we've been growing at a steady pace of about between 5 and 10%. We're already up from this year's runs from where we were last year. We offer, I feel, an awful lot to our community with advanced life support capabilities. We currently run three trucks. We have paramedic on two trucks 24 hours a day. And I think we've tried to fulfill our obligation to take care of people's health needs in this community and the surrounding area, contracted area. But quite honestly, even though that building has been there since 1992, we've outgrown its size and need. And anticipating this, a few years ago, we've bought some land next to the hospital and started to save for quite some time for this purpose. And the building that we have proposed basically meets the needs that we have now. And the way that it's being designed is going to allow for future growth, including more bays if it needs to be, more rooms to be added to housing quarters. And ultimately, we're becoming more and more of a training site for people that are in medicine field or being certifications kept up, CPR training and stuff. And we're gonna add quite a bit more considerable room for a training area. As far as, most of the people I've talked to in the community feel that there's a need there and they support us, but one thing that I have heard from a lot of the people is, okay, how are you going to fund it? And as Bill bought a big part of this out, we're applying for this grant, which is if we're successful, would be close to half a million dollars. And then we have diligently saved for a lot of years and have made a commitment to about three quarters of a million to put into the project. And the rest of the funding, we would secure through the USD Rural Development Loan Group, which is about 3.2% over 40 years. And as far as in raising any of the tax rates in the tax district, which is Hot Springs Ambulance District, which is a separate entity than us, they have done nothing in the last few years outside of go with the cost of living increase. And that's been going on ever since the governor put the cap on. If they chose to go out of that, it would have to be published and it would have to be open to public comment. And I don't see that ever happening. And the service is going on record that we're not anticipating or going to the district and asking for more funds. So that in a nutshell, I hope I can answer any questions and if there's something else that I can answer for you, I'd be glad to try to do it.
This is an open hearing, so it is open to the public's comment or questions.
Backfill. In other words, what are you gonna do with the old building?
That will be up to the ambulance district. And there is codified laws that state what has to happen to that building and how it's dispersed. So that would have to be addressed to them. We own the equipment inside of it, all the furniture, all the trucks and stuff. The building and the land is property of the Hot Springs Ambulance District. And I can't... And I can't speak for them. I would hope that it would be in their interest that maybe it could be, the money's generated, could maybe come back to help support our service. But that would be what goal that I'd like to see happen. Because it was built with tax dollars that were dedicated to the ambulance. Did I answer your questions?
Why is the district not here?
I can't answer. They were informed that it was here tonight. I, you know, we contract to the district to provide the service. The building that's down there, they want the land and stuff, but the building we're proposing and what we want to set for goals, that's the reason why we purchased our own property next here to the hospital.
Well, let's ask the question. Is anybody from the district here?
I have a letter of support from the district.
If there's no more questions, me, I can hand the mic to whoever needs it.
The lady says that she's got a letter of support from the district.
We have several letters of support from a lot of the people in the community here, which we have copies if the council would like to see them, copies, we'd be glad to pass them to you guys.
The building you propose, is it the fascia? Is it going to be more or less representative of the hospital brick or?
The architectural firm we have hired, that's one of the requirements that we're asking them to do, that it fits together out there. It's going to fit together with the nursing home and going to work together along beside the current hospital. And actually, the person that we bought the property from, which was Mr. Bill Cox, the person that actually gave the first property to the hospital. That was one of his deals when he sold to us, that we had to be compatible with, with the, that we don't stand out. We work together. Yes.
Any further questions from the public? Can we close this hearing then, Bill?
We do have the second part of Community Development Housing Needs Assessment. And the second part is something called the Community Development Housing Needs Assessment. As I mentioned, this is just basically sort of a major goal and objective, sending documents for the community. As the title indicates, it's goals and objectives related to community development and housing needs for the city. Visited with Harley on this, what we did was we took the last, the last time you applied for a CDPG, which was the hospital project. We took that assessment and basically revised it a little bit. And that's what we presented to you tonight. The main difference is that the number one goal I'm here now is the ambulance project. Basically, that's what the state wants to see when you submit this, is the project you're proposing to submit the grant for is on the assessment. So anyway, I guess I won't read through you, but if there's any questions, you can respond to me. Or you can certainly make changes to this too, it's your document. I can tell you, there's really no, you know, there's no authority that's going to come in and monitor this or make sure that you do these things. But it's basically your identification of these goals and priorities for the community. So you need to ask for public comment and also adopt this by motion.
It's right after your resolutions in your board package is the page that he's referring to.
Are there any comments from the public? I would assume with this taking the form of the hospital and being virtually the same in the CDG grant authority, it would be acceptable to the state for us to go ahead with the...
It talks about the city looking at substandard housing, encourages the development of housing, improving the condition of housing. I don't know what else, kind of the highlights of what that is. That, it basically relates to the housing and housing condition in Hot Springs and that the city should do their best to keep on top of conditions of housing and improve them where they were possible. There is no grant money for that, it's just a, it's just an assessment and it's goals of what a community should work towards.
Any further comment from the public?
Looking at this, and I double-checked with Bill, that if the city council chooses, you can approve all of the ambulance resolutions as one motion, five through 16. Then you would need four separate motions on the agenda for the four other items that are on the back that are listed as CDPG items. You would need four separate actions on those. So five actions total if you want to go forward with the application.
There are no further comments from the public, I'll close the hearing then. And the chair will entertain a motion to pass Resolutions 2014-5 through 16 on the CDPG Hot Springs Ambulance District. We have a motion to approve and a second. Take roll.
It's up to you.
Do a roll call.
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Weenya?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Get down with this.
Shall we now go to the Community Development and Housing Needs Assessment? Do we have to have another hearing, opening and closing on that?
No, you already, you already did that, so.
Do we just go for a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the Development and Housing Needs Assessment.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Should I go down this list then?
Yes.
The CDPG Documentation of Environmental Exemption, do I have a motion to approve?
Remove.
Second. I have a motion to approve and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The CDPG Application for State Assistance, motion to approve?
Over.
Motion to approve and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? CDPG Applicant Recipient Disclosure Update Report, motion to approve?
Remove. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolutions pass.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here tonight. Something needy for the community and I hope the ambulance service does a good job of it. Thank you.
I would recommend that you go to the hearing.
I have another public hearing on the On-Sale Off-Sale Beverage and Wine for the All-Star Restaurant and Bar. I'll open up the meeting to put the hearing to the public. Do we have any comments from the public?
Did I apply for the licenses?
Yes, I did. February 25th.
We're waiting for it again. We need to get that from...
Yes, we do. Valerie?
I was just going to say, I just wanted to let them know that if they need to have their servers and sellers trained in the laws regarding alcohol sales.
Safe service?
Yep, that we provide that down at the coalition and it doesn't cost them anything, so if they wanted to send in their employees.
That's the employees of the...
Employees are the owners, yeah.
Employees are the owners.
Yep.
I would suggest both.
Yeah.
Having been in the restaurant business before.
Yes, yes.
Then I'll close that hearing and I'll entertain a motion to approve this transfer of ownership.
Remove.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have one more resolution, 2014-17, Improving and Supporting Application for Highway 18 Bypass Lighting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
I have a motion and a second.
Where are we putting these lights again?
Well, I guess there was some question with lighting that bullies have put out by the road. And the highway department didn't like it, so now they want to put up the lights themselves. Additional...
Twenty, we have nine as a standard right now.
There'll be 29 lights up.
29 lights up now.
There's a lot of... Hey, I just added something else. Rich Dackler from the DOT was out and did a study survey and noticed that, you know, you have lights in the beginning of bypass and then it's dark and then lights again. And it's not enough time for eyes to change, to go from one to the other. So if there's a jogger, there's a deer crossing, what have you, it's lighting. And turnoffs there, not just mine, but all of the turnoffs there, you can't see that. And if you go down the bypass tomorrow, look, there's, there's people that have driven and there's a four-foot culvert there, I mean, someone's going to get hurt. So I think as we're developing on the state, we just need to do the right thing and make it right, so.
I think this is a good way to take care of that. Mr. Sussman?
Yes, maybe not on this resolution, but maybe in the future, you might want to take a look at the lighting going down 71 a little ways in front of the new hospital and possibly the ambulance center. You know, you want people to make sure they make those turnoffs.
I think the highway department was proposing something...
Now, we weren't able to catch it in time to get it on this one and get it out, but they are definitely interested in lighting wherever in that area of town because of the congestion that's out there.
While they're doing the work, it makes more sense that we do it in here.
It would be good.
Is, who takes care of the lighting out there, like that's the state or is it...
Well, I think the state puts it in, but the city pays for it.
The city does maintenance.
So have you lost control again?
No, no. No.
Solar sound.
Solar sound lighting maintenance is currently is contracted, but if there's anybody that wants to buy a boot truck and make an offer to the city, I think we're ready to make a change. Business opportunity for you.
We live in a very special area and it's dark. Can we get these lights to reflect downward, get less pollution above us? Since we put new lights on?
Got to be a requirement of DOT, the ones that have the specs.
They have to...
Well, I think we could ask them.
Especially highway lighting.
Because we have a lot of pollution and we could cut that down a little bit and people will see the stars in town.
On a highway, you can't light as well, I would not be turning lights in there, they have it downward. There's a few residential houses, but there's tourists turning into hotels, man aside, and there's no turning lights there. And there's really a lot of very bad accidents going on there. I mean, lighting's going to be a great improvement there, but I have, I can't even comprehend why there were turning lights in that one street that road. Clearly, somebody got involved enough.
That's a question for DOT, we have the control.
I know, but I mean, we need to get them to see that, that that's a dangerous area.
There was a study by the DOT and they, it's too big trap to put the one line over, zero eight, the very bedroom line. And the guy from Castleville can answer the question.
Rich Law, right?
It was too much for the one line.
How many accidents actually happen in a location like that?
That was the question that you proposed to get that passed back. So we still have their own, their own Florida, their last word on it. We have, the council in the past has asked for, you know, we got the rumble script, we asked for that, so we think we've got it.
Yeah, that's great, I think that's solved a lot. And bigger stop sign, lighting, great. But you've got all these tourists turning into different hotels and man aside out there. And there's no turning lane at Bullies, no last verse there. And the weird turning, left turn lane down in residential areas is so bizarre. I'm giving you a couple of examples, we, you know, we should never let that go.
It isn't something that we can project on them from the council table, it's the public that asks from the table.
You guys are part of the public. I mean, let's, I mean, whatever we got to do, I'd be happy to go and say, this is a very dangerous intersection. You know, with a lot of cars and traffic and tourists and I think everybody knows somebody here that's been hit on that boat. I don't know what you got to do to make it worse, but...
Well, we're going to have increased traffic too with the ambulance over there, I mean, we have a big issue.
Well, that, yeah, you're only making them, you know, the hospitals out there and now you're putting the ambulance out there, it's going to be...
I personally believe that there should be a lighting system at that car. Oh, because of the runaway truck ramp?
Turn lanes.
Okay, I have a motion on the table and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? I did have a motion, did you hear that? Thank you. Jumped in there a little bit. Personnel, you can, oh, I didn't, I didn't have an opportunity to go back to communications from the public. I believe that we had something from...
Evans Point.
Evans Point update.
We had a closing this week and I think it went pretty well. And Tim's here too, but we had close to 450 hours that were volunteers. And I feel like our team needs to thank all of our volunteers. Because we, sorry about that. But I mean, they brought in snacks and everything, but they worked very good and all of our employees down there did too. And we are open now, but our opening will be on this coming Saturday for grant. And I don't know if Tim had anything else you wanted to add, but we're just still adding up volunteer hours, but I just feel like we need to let people know it was great.
March 29th.
Or 29th, yeah. And so be sure to come down and see what all we have, we have some special things going on.
Thank you. Back onto the agenda. You can read the personnel, I want to go to full business, golf course, equipment purchase.
Jason is here for recommendation, but in your board packets, he was looking at three pieces of equipment, showing the bids. It's on the back of the equipment request, he talks about them in detail and then the numbers are on the back with his recommendations. He's present to answer any questions.
Are we going to be approving the purchase of equipment then?
Yes, please. The funding was set aside last budget here for $50,000 and the three pieces of equipment has come to, I think, like $30,000. So basically a rundown of what it is, it's a rough mower that's going to be pulled behind the tractor. We got another green, we got a green mower coming and then a degree mower.
And the highlighted ones are his recommended bowl bid.
I tried to break it out to multiple vendors, so you guys can have something to compare with. I'm wondering if that price is too high or if you have a question on it.
It was the cultural rec meeting to... We were going to recommend that you go ahead and purchase this stuff.
Okay. So we've got a Toro blower, elastic deck mower, and two greens rollers. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of this equipment?
Just one green roller.
One?
Yeah, yeah, it's just the highlighted one.
Okay.
I will second Wes's motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most pass.
Two trade-ins are the ones that's shaded, too?
Yeah.
They're not trade-ins, are they?
And you're going to share that blower with Freedom Trail, right?
Absolutely.
All right. I just want that public correction. Next item under full business, S P E A C agreement, lighting supplies.
South Dakota Aeronautics Commission, you had talked about this previously, or at least the Airport Advisory Board, and asked if they could get permission to get the lenses changed for the runway approach, and that it was coming from a grant. That was just informational, and you all nodded your heads, okay. This is the agreement authorizing the mayor to sign for that purchase with the South Dakota Aeronautics Commission.
Do you have a motion, then?
No move.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Parks master plans.
We have Matt here, if anyone has a question for him. But I think it's kind of general consensus that we move forward with this master plan. I mean, it's a little review plan at this time to get this thing started.
Well, how can we get it started? Let's look at the different sections of it, shall we? Look at breaking this out and starting with what money we've got right now.
That's what we talked about at the cultural rec committee meeting.
And what is your recommendation?
We're going to do the overview, or we're going to do just a couple pieces for now, until we get some more money budgeted. Kind of, I guess, give them a chance to get started here.
What kind of money are we talking about?
I think it was about seventeen thousand, wasn't it, Harley?
Yeah. If you're talking about the master plan needs assessment, and the next part was the Butler Park master plan, that's seventeen thousand five.
So... We have a motion and a second. The recommendation from Parks and Rec.
We're doing a general overview of all the parks, so general assessment.
I'd like to...
Emphasizing a couple. Matt might just explain that for the benefit of the public, since we've got a lot of lookers here. Pass the mic over unless he talks loud.
Matt, you want to come up and make a little presentation? We got a mic for you.
You won't do it? I can speak pretty loudly if you can hear me. If anybody can hear me, let me know, and I'll use a mic. Well, I guess what we've proposed is a master plan for three parks, and then this overall needs assessment for the entire city. And the master plans were for Butler, Brookside, and the Ninety Acre parcel. And really, I put those in there as options at the request of the people that were at the meeting I was originally at. And I think that you should bite off whatever chunks you want to bite off initially and are comfortable with, and see what results you get out of those. The needs assessment seems to be the most important thing for the city of Hot Springs, as I've heard your discussions over the last couple of months. And the idea with that is to give you a chance to go through every park in the city, every green space in the city, and maybe all public spaces as well, and think about them in terms of parks and recreation, and how they're serving your purposes. We'll have a public meeting where everybody can come in and weigh in and get their input into each one of those. And we'll go back, we'll do our own analysis, where we look at, you know, do you have enough soccer fields relative to other cities your size in the region? You know, are the parks meeting your cultural needs? And there's a few other pieces that we do in there. And then we'll, with whatever interest group, whether that's the cultural rec committee or a general public committee that you designate, we'll go through and identify goals and objectives for each park in the city, and come away with a kind of a master list that's prioritized. We could go through and set targets, as far as we want to do this in 2015, and this in 2016. And then that there is a tool for you to use in planning. And as you set your budgets as a city, it's a document that's done in the public, advertised, so that you can feel that you've got the support of the community with the recommendations that come out of it. It's a document, it floats, so you can change it as you go along, but it can give you some real direction as far as what you're going to be doing over the next few years. So that's the goal for that. And, you know, there's lots of little side projects that come up, and like the building there, and those should be part of that, and kind of get their designation as part of that. You know, as soon as we finish, the day after, somebody's going to come in with a new idea and want to do something else. And that is just a fact of life in the world, where there's people with new ideas all the time. But this can kind of give you a ground floor for approaching your parks. And, you know, you won't have a plan for every park of what to build necessarily, but you'll definitely have a list of things that you want to do in that. And it can give you a real roadmap for getting that done. And we hope that it's really useful for you. It doesn't... You know, the purpose of it isn't necessarily to find out everything that you should do in town. You know, the city's complex, has many different avenues and groups that are working towards the end of having a great city all the time. But as far as your parks go, it should help you, keep you organized over the next few years. So that's the idea with the needs assessment. And I guess with the... It sounds like we're moving towards that in Butler Park. And I think the Butler Park plan, we should have a plan at the end of it, you know, that shows you where everything goes. Not construction documents, but, you know, where fields should be at, and... Yeah, yeah. So next steps, and I know there's some things that you need to do this year, and so we shoot towards having that kind of figured out. But that's what we're thinking right now, and really looking forward to working for you and with you on that.
Well, we expect some good development back to the city with the seventeen thousand dollar bill coming to you, okay? Or to us. Mr. Smaller?
I just wondered, this Ninety Acres, why would we develop it as a city park when it's six, seven miles outside of the city?
Wouldn't be a park. More of a hiking, hiking and mountain biking kind of a deal.
It's not a... Okay.
Well, it is a park, I guess, but it's not going to be a picnic tables and swings and...
It sounds like Matt's proposing facilitators. We have a group in town that facilitates.
We've actually kind of taken that Ninety Acres off at this point to kind of bring this into three main areas.
The facilitators, it sounds like you're saying that you're going to facilitate what the public wants. We have a group in town that facilitates.
You bet. So that's part of what we do. And we would not be replacing what you're doing throughout the community, I don't think. What you guys are doing is...
Have you been to that group, or...
I've been in contact with some of the members, and I guess we would want to maybe take off pieces that they've been working on and take it to the next step, I guess. So, but I guess the reason that we do public input is because we'd be focusing specifically on parks and recreation, and not necessarily on what to do with the plunge or something like that, you know? And so...
Well, my one problem with seventeen thousand, I don't have a problem with the seventeen thousand, but you're looking, or the city's looking to pay you, I take it. And I don't believe with this group that got facilitators, the city even bought a case of water for them. I just have a problem there of being a tax payer, you know?
Can I say something about that? You know, I've been to a few of these cultural rec meetings, and some of the discussions, they seemed really like a good idea as far as... Like Butler Park, for example, we have all the soccer fields, the baseball fields. There's a lot of space that isn't utilized. We're trying to put other soccer fields up there. If you had a master plan, correct me if I'm wrong about any of this, Wes, if you had a master plan where they looked at that whole park, they might be able to tell you a way that over time, how you want to redesign that, that entire park, to fit all the fields the right way. Before we start adding benches, we've had problems with, you know, if somebody will donate money to put a bench in or something, and that's awesome. But where it's placed might be in the middle of where we're going to end up moving the field. So it's kind of, you make that long-term plan. Am I mistaken on some of that, as far as what I was explaining? So that part kind of made some sense to help us for that long term. So then with all the stuff like, that these committees have done, then they know that they're never going to be putting something in an area that is set aside for the soccer field that they want to move up there, or something like that.
You know, this master plan for the parks and recreation has been a matter of going thing for the six years that I've been a member of the council. And if we can get this going, I'd sure like to see it happen. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I know that Scott from the chamber spoke to the school. And I asked him if he would ask the children, you know, ask the school if they would do a survey for the kids like they did for us, for Hot Springs, for the town, for the adults. And she is very excited about it. She thinks it's a very good idea. So I would like to, you know, maybe just see the assessment done, the ten thousand, and wait on everything until everyone gets their input in, because the children are going to be the ones using it. The adults make the overall decision for safety and the future. But the kids are our future. And so they're going to be the ones using it. So I would like to see them have their input in before we say, okay, well, let's go ahead and do this master, big plan for this park, before we get that survey in from the children.
What's the timeframe that this is all supposed to be done? I mean, is there a date that says we will have this plan done by, or is it just open? Whenever we get it done?
We would look at...
For just the plan, not for all the implementation?
It's going to be a two to three month process. By the time you set up public meetings, take input, I mean, the finalization of it will probably happen in sometime mid-summer. And you're going to have your kids' surveys, and if it's going to happen during the school year, you'll have all that in as far as...
Yeah, I didn't even know there was actually a date set. Because sometimes things can just go on and on unless there's a date set that we're going to say, we're going to have it done by this time.
Well, it's been a while since we've gone six years, nothing's getting done.
Well, it's been longer than six years, it's been. The thing is, if you don't ever get started, you're never going to finish. And that's where...
This is a good jumping off point. Something to get it going and get it started for the community. Do I have a motion? Yes. I have a motion and a second.
I've got one more comment. I think the park we just acquired in front of Motel Six along the river definitely needs to be addressed, because it's a high-visibility area for tourists and stuff coming into town. And we need to look at a park that isn't developed at all and do some work there, too. And that's my only comment. Otherwise, I'll go along.
Thank you, buddy. I have a motion and a second. Any further comment?
I just have a question. Who's doing the surveys? Are you creating the surveys, then?
Well, I guess...
If there's any questions, ask the kids.
We've done many surveys with kids, and it's really fun to put them together as part of this. That could be a really cool part of it. And I guess it depends on what you want to survey them on. There's a lot of things to ask, and it could be, do they have a park in their neighborhood? And do they have a playground that they can play on?
For you to develop?
With walking distance from their house, or... And there's a few things to think through there about what you would want to ask the kids in Hot Springs that's really relevant to their lives and their interaction with the city parks, you know, and the other green spaces in town. So, yeah, I mean, that should be... If there's an opportunity to survey the kids specifically, they have the best input. All the adults are great, usually have good ideas, but not as good as the kids, usually, so...
So do you create the survey?
Yeah, we could, absolutely.
I think the school's going to do it.
The school's going to do it? Well, whatever you do, I mean, we'd want to know about it and be involved however we could.
I could be wrong, but I think she's going to initiate it, and she's asking the teachers to put it through. To see, you know, what they think and how they could put it into their classroom as a... As a chance for the children to learn how to plan, you know? And she's going to use it as an educational tool. The way she worded it, she's very eloquent, and she writes. It sounded like, great idea, and excited for them.
So could she work with Matt, and they work together in coming up with the survey?
She's working with the chamber.
Oh, with the chamber.
I know she's...
Mr. Smaller?
I'd like to address the council. Last year, you donated five hundred dollars to the Southern Hills Initiative. It was more or less for a recreation plan. Their plan was thirteen thousand they were trying to raise, and the city kicked in five hundred to them. It's a foundation, a local foundation, and maybe they need to be revisited before what their plan. So I'm just bringing that up. You've got some money in the game already.
Parks and Recreation, have you been to the...
Nope.
Never had any input from them?
Nope.
Well, we do have a motion on the floor and a second to that motion, and I'd like to call the vote. All in favor of the resolution for the Parks and Rec master plan? Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? No opposition, it passes. You go forward with the master plan.
Thank you, Matt.
Yes, ma'am?
Concerning old business, I tried to call Harley three times, but I never got a return call. I know he's busy. I came before the council and asked for them to review the code of conduct, and it is not in the business. And that was supposed to be reviewed and voted on this council meeting?
I think that Don is going to go with community speed going right now.
Is he? Okay.
So I think it's still something that will be put on.
Okay.
It's something we can work on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Annual lease transfer, Larry McIntyre.
He told me to be here, but I don't see him. This is similar to what the council took action a couple months ago. It's an existing hanger lease at the airport. It's one of our original ones, long-term. The lease is through 2037. So it's a multiple-year lease. Larry is selling the hanger to Larry Vetterman, and is requesting that we transfer the lease to him.
Act on it, or wait till he comes and...
Well, no, he's been requesting, I mean, he's been wanting to do this now for a couple months. And he was dealing with the mayor for a while, and having to force, and went to a couple of the Airport Advisory Board meetings. And he says now it's, he wants to act on it. It was in his plans for six, eight months, but now it's came time that he wants to make the sale.
Can you just do this for somebody else?
Yes, you did for John Nash here, a couple, two or three.
I think the motion was... Go ahead and go for it.
I was saying, we did discuss it in the last year. So a transfer of lease from McIntyre to Vetterman.
To Vetterman.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Two hundred vacant structure, 243 North Rivers Street.
Well, parks, I guess Harley brought it to our attention. We only don't want to...
We've got a vacant building next to City Hall, which we believe is creating our pigeon problem that we have. And if you come by City Hall instead of coming in, take a little jock down the alley and you'll see exactly what we're talking about. But there is a pretty extreme pigeon dropping issue between the buildings. During the winter months, you could watch and the whole top of City Hall was lined with pigeons. Well, we we got a pigeon expert in. He said if we put an owl up there, a dummy owl, that it'll chase the pigeons away. And yes, it did and they're all up with the wires now. So bring through the wires and down up at the museum. But what's happening is the upper windows in the vacant building next to City Hall are broken out and it's they're flying down onto City Hall and jumping across and going into that building. So...
What is the proposal to 243 North River Street? What we'd like to do is have action by the city council authorizing the windows to be boarded up so we can provide proper notice to the owners. And this has been one of our frequent flyer owner problems that
we've been having on three other buildings in town. So we want to make sure we're covering our bases legally and taking action if we so choose to have the city go in and get that boarded up or at least serve notice to the owner to have it boarded up.
Can we legally go in there without being trespassing?
We have to serve notice first. So, you know, the motion would be to serve notice that the owner boarded up and as our ordinance says that if after notice for anything that we have an ordinance on, if it's not taken care of by the property owner, then the city can go in and take care of that and bill the property owner accordingly.
We have a motion to all...
I have a motion. Let's move back there and it's discussed.
We have a motion in a second to address the owners of 243 North River. Board up their windows. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. Committee reports. Administration and Promotion, there is no, no report from them. Public Courts, Dwight?
We're waiting on more info on our water meters to see what second opinion changing a bunch of the old ones out price-wise. We have a meeting with Southern Hills Water Users, March 20th at 2:00 PM to kick some stuff around. The bid opening projects for the water main replacement projects are April 17th at 3:00 PM. We talked about sewer Cameron, the all the sewer lines under the 385 Highway project. We need to get going on that. We talked about the pothole on Highway 385 in Prano and First Interstate Bank. It's his responsibility was to fix it because it's the state's responsibility. Baco Thumb update, the Baco went to Rapid City on the 12th for the install of the new thumb. And that's about it. Oh, we did act a year, we did talk, kick around the code of ethics too a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to Administration and Promotion, we do have a meeting on Wednesday this week at 1:00 AM, City Hall. Public Safety, Craig Roman.
We talked about stop signs at Sixth and Cambridge. I guess people running them quite frequently again. Bob's put a car down there, just sitting there and they don't do it but when nothing's around there, it's like every other stop sign town, you know. Unless you're watching it, they're going to go through it or turn around to Main Street. Unless you're watching them, they're going to turn around to Main Street. We talked about the ambulance service and we took care of that tonight. Talked about gun club lease at the airport. The city does own land. The lease is up and I think Harley getting all the state home to put a lease together because they're the ones that run the traffic. From my understanding now. Am I right, Harley?
Yes.
Okay. Talked about speed at Happy Hollow. There's a problem with on the hill and we don't know how to solve it because it's 15 mile an hour speeds zone, but there ain't no way you can make that hill in the winter time at 15 mile an hour. So we don't...
Going up Happy Hollow, you mean off of Manicata?
Yeah. I mean, there's 15 mile an hour down to bottom and coming down off the hill. Going up, I guess it's still 25. I guess people just, you know, you look at a car doing 25 and down, it looks fast anyway. So I don't know. And Bob said he'd see what we could do about more signage or something like that. And the hanger we talked about, we just took care of that tonight. And the vacant structure, we took care of that. We talked about burning the river again. Talked about sidewalks, old the town because we're going to go through the ordinances. That's all we have.
Thanks, sir. Back to Mr. Merrick. Culture and Recreation, Wes Bryant.
Yeah, we talked about Jason's purchase on some of his stuff and we discussed this, well, we started talking about golf carts, kind of trying to start thinking about a plan for how we're going to deal with that in the future. And there's going to be a master plan committee that's been already put together to get ahead of, was that Norby or the guy that's going to do this needs assessment out there. And we talked with Chris, the Mueller Center on the heat pump situation and trying to figure out what we're going to do here. We're up and going with most of the heat pumps currently, but 30 years old. So I guess we're going to start figuring something out here. And we talked Cindy. She had a lot of repairs last couple of months up there, but she, you know, another building, it's starting to get a little age on it. So I guess it's unusual. We and your family want to donate a bench on the Freedom Trail. We talked about that placement. And we talked about this Parks Master Plan proposal. And I guess I don't, I don't remember anything else. Do you, Al? Oh, we also discussed that fountain behind Mueller Center and we're going to talk to, I guess, Bart and see what, whatever happened on that deal. That's about it, I believe.
Right there. Mr. Lux?
Just a couple of quick items. 25th of March is the deadline for petitions to get in. Several petitions are floating around. We do have final petitions in for Dave Ferris as mayor and for Carol Ann Schwarzenbach for Ward Two, right?
Three.
Ward Three on that one. So those two are officially in the running for sure. As I said, several petitions are out. 25th is the deadline. Make sure you contact City Hall. If you don't know how many signatures you need, make sure you have a few others, especially in the wards that have multiple people running because whichever, you're only allowed to sign one petition for one opening and it's the date of the person that signed it that takes priority over the signatures. So, you know, two people file petitions and you don't have a lot of extra signatures. You also get a, get a half a dozen extras or something to make sure that you have enough or at least check. Now, as soon as they come in, we check them, but if somebody waits till five o'clock on the 25th of March, there's no time to change it after that date. So again, petitions are out there, one for each ward plus mayor. One of the, just make mention, I know the council committees over the last year or so occasionally talked about the texting here and the House passed a texting bill 52 to 17. The Senate followed through with 28 to 7. It's on the governor's desk for signing and it's in the form of Senate Bill 179 if anybody wants to go online and take a look at actually what the texting bill was. But it will make it a, a traffic offense, as I understand it, the same as any other traffic offenses for the use of texting. There were, there were a lot of versions going around calling it the distracted driving and that would have been cigarette smokers and talking on the cell phone and not just texting and, you know, anything else that you might be doing while you're driving that shouldn't be, that could be considered a distraction.
I think the Senate bill calls for that secondary offense.
Yes, I believe it is.
With a $100 penalty. However, every city can be more restrictive with it if they want to and that's a good thing. Mr. Miller?
I will.
I'm a little confused about this code of conduct. Two weeks ago, we were, it was on a motion on your agenda to be put on this agenda for a vote. Is there, it's not even on the agenda?
Because of the mayor being gone, it didn't get on the agenda, but it probably will be on the first meeting of next one.
But you did the minutes. It's when you okayed the minutes, shouldn't have been brought up that that wasn't on from last two weeks ago. I mean, we're into a vote coming up on the 25th or so is the last time we can initiate something into a vote. And here the council, all of a sudden it disappears right before the vote and it gives us people no time to put initiative to you, a vote for a conduct, a code of conduct. I'm just, I'm just confused.
Could I speak, Carol?
Yes.
I, I talked to Sukie Angie at the county and I asked her, I said, you guys have a code of conduct, code of ethics? She said, well, Wes, I'm not going to try to speak to the commissioners, but she said, you know, just as you council people or you take an oath, they take an oath and they kind of consider that their code of conduct, their code of ethics. And just as a good citizen, I mean, we, we all know what good conduct and code of ethics are.
I didn't ask that, Wes.
But Neil, I guess, you know, you guys keep bringing this thing up and I guess I, I don't understand what, what your ulterior motive is behind this. I mean...
I asked if something was put in the motion two weeks, weeks ago and was to be put in this motion or this agenda, why wasn't it there? I didn't ask that you should be under a code of conduct. I'd like to see you pass a code of conduct, but that's my question. It's not the county. I'm not worried about the county. You weren't worried about the county. You said we're Hot Springs. The county's the county.
I, like I said, I took an oath when I become a council person, as well as I went to peer and I went through a little session, I guess, and they kind of teach us pretty much everything you're talking about.
I think the question relates to why it was talked about in the minutes of the last meeting and was not brought forward for this meeting. And I say again that the mayor didn't get it there and it will probably be on the agenda. Whether it passes, I don't know. But I assume that the mayor will have it on the minutes of the next meeting.
It was his intent to visit with each of the committees and get input from people and actually get back. So it was not the intention, I think he still has work he'd like to do with it.
So...
But do you, what you're saying is you'd like to have referendum or something that's a vote on?
Yes, if, if the people can't do it. They were hoping that the council would take initiative and pass something. And now we can't take it to a vote. I mean, again, we've got a paperwork all been, seven days, eight days, but I'm just disappointed.
I'm not sure, but I think that's if you're running for office, Neil. I don't think there's anything as far as an initiated measure that you can't do this at any time, but you have to signature.
It'd be nice, okay.
If you're running for office, I think you have to...
Okay, there won't be any mayor's report since he's not here. So I wish you all a happy, happy St. Patty's Day and I'll, I'll enjoy a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Motion, second to the favor.